Madam President, the time is 5:31.
Good evening and welcome to the special board meeting at Adelanto Elementary School District, Tuesday, February the 7th, 2023. Ms. LeVey, can I please get a roll call?
Madam President, the time is 5:32. I'll get roll call. Trustee Benz. I'm present. Trustee Turner.
Turner present.
Trustee Webster.
Webster present.
Trustee LaFrench.
Trustee LaFrench present. A form has been established. Please stand for the pleasure of allegiance. Place your right hand over your heart. Ms. LeVey, do we have any proposed additions, or deletions, or adjustments in order of business?
We do not, Madam President.
Adoption of the agenda. Trustees, I need a motion.
Benz, I motion to approve the agenda.
Webster, I second.
Please call for the vote.
I think. Trustee Webster?
Hi.
Turner, I.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I.
Trustee French? The French, I. Public testimony. Mr. Kraus, do we have any speakers?
Madam President, if I may read the public comment.
Please.
Paragraph before we do. Thank you. Public comment period is administered by state law and is the point in the meeting set aside for members of the public to share their opinions with the board. Open meeting laws do not permit the board to engage in dialogue or answer questions. The health, well-being, and public safety of community members, public officials, and employees is a top priority for the Adelanto Elementary School District. Consistent with the shelter-in-place orders from the governor's Emory County, board members and staff may participate in this meeting via Zoom. The meeting is in compliance with the governor's executive order. Protocols for speakers. Any person who wishes to address the governing board on open session agenda items must complete or submit an AEST speaker request form before the meeting is called to order. If the comment is about something not on the agenda, it will be heard during this time as well. A public speaker can be cut off for exceeding the allotted time or willfully causing an actual disruption to the meeting. Before cutting a person off or removing someone, the board will give at least one clear warning. Individual speakers are allowed three minutes to address the board on each item. The board limits the total time for public input on each item to 20 minutes. With board consent, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public presentation depending on the topic and the number of persons wishing to be heard. The president may take a poll of speakers for or against a particular issue. May ask that any additional person speak out only if they have something new to add. At this time, Madam President, we'd like to call up Ms. Lisa Martinelli to the podium.
You. And again, thank you for helping our staff in a time of difficulty as well. So, that's basically all I wanted to say.
We have a representative from ADTA this evening before we go back to public comments with the audience. We'd like to welcome Madam President, Ms. Generator, to the podium.
Thank you, trustees. It's a very difficult time. Thank you for having me up here. Thank you for having this meeting in honoring Holly. What can be said about Holly? She was a woman of faith, a wonderful wife, mother, friend. She served our district so many years advocating for our students. To talk about her life, the best way to describe Holly is through the scripture of the Apostle Paul's letter to the Galatians, chapter 5, verses 22 and 23. But the fruit of the Spirit is love, joy, peace, patience, kindness, goodness, faithfulness, gentleness, and self-control. Against these things, there is no law. Holly embodied each of those qualities. She also understood that this world is not our home. A good analogy is that of the metamorphosis of the caterpillar. In this world, we are the caterpillars, and through the cocoon of death, we are delivered into God's presence as a beautiful butterfly. She is dancing before her Lord right now, fully healed, fully restored, and fully whole. And we remember her very fondly. Thank you.
Is there anyone that wishes to speak on behalf of CSCA this evening? We'd like to welcome Madam President, Ms. Diane Lynn, President of CSCA, to the podium.
Good evening, Madam President LaFrench, trustees, Mr. Kraus Cabinet, classified staff, certificated staff, the family and friends of trustee Holly Eckes. I don't know if I'm supposed to do this, but I'm going to. Can we please bow our heads? Heavenly Father, we ask for your mercy and grace for trustee Holly Eckes as she passes from this life into eternity. Please bring her into your loving arms and grant her peace and rest. We also pray for those who are left behind, that they would find comfort and peace in your presence and the promise of eternal life. May all share the memories and keep them in your heart, all that you have for Holly, and bring you peace. May Holly Eckes' soul rest in peace and enjoy the fullness of your love. In your precious name, we pray. Amen. I recall Holly. I recall Eric coming to Braddock. I started at Braddock in 1998. And Holly would come in and, you know, very, very nice lady. She always advocated for classified staff, being that she started here in Adelanto as with classified staff. I know she will be missed. We all have her in our hearts, so I pray that we all have peace and comfort. Thank you.
At this time, on the agenda, we will be moving to new business in a moment, and then on section five, public testimony, this is the time that we will also ask audience members to come to the podium if they wish to speak, and at that point in time, if you just state your name when we get to item number five. But at this time, Madam President, if you will move to new business.
At this time, I'm going to announce the the passing of our beloved friend, trustee Ms. Holly Eckes. This time, I'm gonna open it up for other trustees to have a comment. And I'll start with trustee Benz.
You know, I've had to work and I've been disconnected. But Holly's been on my mind since I first heard of her diagnosis. And I was compelled to go see her, and thank God I had a chance to go with trustee Turner, and I did tell the Mr. Eckes's how great grateful I am that I got to see her because I was compelled to be Jesus in skin, I guess. I've heard that term. Our Lord has been a comforter to me, and I just wanted to just remind her because I knew she knew what a comforter our God was. And we looked at the cards from the school that they had sent her. I think it was from West Creek or West Palm, trustee Turner. And the kids wrote the nicest things, that she was the best trustee, which I was a little jealous. I told her that. I told Holly that, yeah, I'm jealous. And I will forever be grateful that I got to see her and talk to her, read scripture to her. And we prayed, the family, trustee Turner prayed over her, and I still pray when I'm in the playground watching the kids. I've been praying all this time. You know, because she's always on my mind, you know. With the long, drawn-out election, once it was done, I was really looking forward because we have a really good team. And I was just, you know, it's new. And now it's like we're missing a big chunk, like a really big chunk. And it's just not gonna be the same. So you know, we didn't always agree, but man, she was really nice. And I'm really sorry.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Turner?
This is really difficult for me right now, as is for all of us here and all of you out there. I want to say to the family, may God give you comfort and peace during this difficult time. We're here for you. Anything that you need, call us. We're here for you. I met Holly when I was first elected to the board back in 2005. And we're on, as you're aware of the election, we have two schedules on the election every two years. Trustees are up for election, and I've always had the honor to serve with Holly. And I have several pictures of us being sworn in at the same time. Looking over the years. It's hard looking down there across even when their dais was back there and in the old boardroom, and I know many of you remember that a long time ago. I remember coming from closed session, we would have to knock on the door so the mice can run through so we can walk through to get to the boardroom. I'm sorry. Just a second. All the years, I will never remember not turning my phone off. Holly was compassionate. She had convictions. You know, we constantly butt heads. You know, but we always knew where each other stood, and we always knew that we can call on each other, you know, and for whatever. She would call me and, what do you think about this? And I'd call her, what do you think about that? And I have to agree with what trustee Benz said. We had a great team here. You know, with the coming of, with the passing of trustee Hunter, we got trustee Webster. And she fit right in with the five of us. And I got our new superintendent. I was looking forward to doing great things for the district, and we're still gonna move forward, but it's gonna be difficult right now. Holly will be missed. The last time I went to visit, the first time I visited, she was very talkative. And she said that she wanted to be a board member for life. She loved serving on this board. She loved serving our children. She loved serving our community. The second time, she wasn't talking that much, but she did say some words. And I did tell her some of the plans that we were proposing to make, and she was really, really happy to hear that. I can't mention them yet because they haven't been finalized or we haven't voted on anything yet, but I was able to tell her what I was planning to propose. What I can't say is that I'm happy that she didn't suffer too long. But she was in great spirits, great spirits, and she never once complained. We would ask her if she was in pain. She would say no. And I asked her husband, I said, does she have a high tolerance for pain? He said, yes, she did. She loved her sons. Every time you would see Holly out from the dais, she had her sons with her. And I know you're gonna miss your mom, but she's in a better place without a pain. Out of pain. I just want to say that this district and our community and this board and cabinet will miss her greatly.
Thank you. Trustee Webster?
I wanna start by thanking everybody for being here tonight and joining us. When I first came to the board, Holly reached out to me the night of my appointment. And that was the that was the beginning of what was one of the best relationships on this board. She knew so much about this district. And she loved it with all of her heart. And she had these dreams where every kid here got so much. She talked about how great our teachers are and how great our staff is. It still really doesn't feel real. And I'm gonna say that it's not gonna be the same without her coming in and sitting here starting off every meeting with the best hugs. She was such a key component to this dais. And she will forever be watching over us. Holly wasn't just the board member. She was a mother. She was a wife. And I can tell you, she loved you so much. She talked and bragged about her boys. Like, they were the best thing that ever happened to her. I want to say thank you to the family for letting me have time with you and Ms. Eckes. And thank you.
Okay. So I met Holly back in 2000, I think it was 18, when I was first thinking about running for the board. And she always would talk to me, and she would always say, hey hun, hey hun. And I would say, why you call me hun all the time? And she'd say, you're hun now. And I say, hun? And so I got used to being called hun. And I would always tell her that I was a hugger, and she loved to give hugs and to receive them. I have a son of my own, and I remember she would say, my boys, my boys. And then when I first met them, I said, whoa, those are some big boys. Big boys. So I was thinking like maybe little boys, but I was like looking up like, these are some big boys. But she would always, 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 whenever she had a moment, she would always talk about her family, always talk about her boys, how much she loved her boys, her boys, her boys. And I would say, those are not boys, Holly. Those are really big men. They are not boys. And she would say, those are my boys. Those are my boys. And I thank you for allowing me to be able to come see her. I would always tell her, Holly, please, can I just have your eyes? You have the beautiful, beautiful, this eyes, you know, and we would talk about being hairdressers and, you know, dying hair and what you do and, you know, eyebrows. And I was like, okay, I'm gonna go home and I'm gonna try that, right? And I'd call her, and she'd stay on the phone with me, and we would just talk and talk. And I was like, well, I can't call anybody else because I don't want it to be a quorum, right? And so I can only, I can only talk to you about this, right? And she would, you know, give her feedback, and she would say, oh, no, hun, you're doing, you're doing just fine, hun. And then I had surgery a couple of years ago on my foot, and I was like, I can't drive. And she was like, hun, I'm coming to get you. And I was like, come and get me? And she was like, yeah, throw the scooter in the back of the truck. And I was like, oh, my God, it's gonna get all scratched up. She was like, hun, put it in there. I was like, okay, here we go. And we went off, and she took me to the doctor. Anything that you needed, she would say, call me, let me know. And I said, okay, I'm gonna take you up on that offer because I can't drive. And she would come pick up Kendall and I and take me. And she was like, I'll have my boys take me, take you if I'm not, if I can't go. And for her to be out of pain, I just know that she's just dancing around now and calling everybody in heaven hun and hun. You know, it's like unbelievable right now that she's not here with us, but she is here with us. I said, you know, for the first couple of days, it was so hard for me to get any sleep, but I just kept, I told everybody at work, hun, hun, I'm used to calling people sweetie. I said, but I must mix it up with sweetie and hun because it was hun, hun. And I just loved and appreciate her honesty, her ability. She was such a little fighter, right? If she didn't agree with something, she'd be, this is over with. I'm walking out. This is over. I'm leaving. And I'd be like, Holly, we're in closed session. I'm done. I'm leaving. Boom, she's gone. I said, well, I guess this is now over. Holly left. And she knew so much. Anything that you can, you could ask her, anything about this district, and she could tell you. This was like this. This was like this. You do this. You do this. No, I know about this. The pool, the pool. It would be so wonderful, the pool. She loved that pool. She wanted the children of our district to be able to have someplace to go and to learn how to swim, and we're not gonna forget her for that. I just think about all of the memories that I have and the pictures that I have. I used to say, no, stand on this side. No, this is my good side. And she'd be like, no, I'm standing over here. And we would go, it was just wonderful to be able to. One other story I have to tell you. We had to drive down the hill, and I was like, I'm not driving at that, right? And she was like, oh, no, I'm gonna get this district car. And I was like, oh, Lord, this district car is terrible. And she was like, I know. So I was like, next time, I'm taking my car. And she was like, you're going too fast. And then I was like, get your boys. We had so much fun because I can't see at nighttime. I was like, well, you better lead the way because I didn't forgot my glasses. And she's like, oh, like, we should call my boys, her boys, her boys, her boys. It was so wonderful to be able to have someone to talk to. Even if you thought the decision to be one way, she was one to tell you, this is the right way. We do it the right way. And I say, okay, hun, the right way. I want to say thank you for allowing me to be able to come and visit her. If you need anything, please reach out to us. We appreciate you being here tonight. I know this is difficult. It's difficult for us. Know that your mom, your wife is smiling down right now with those beautiful eyes, calling everybody in heaven hun, hun. Thank you. I appreciated her. Okay, right now, we're going to move on to public testimony. Mr. Kraus?
Yes, Madam President, we do have additional speaker cards. And then also, as a reminder to the audience, after our speaker cards are exhausted, if you wish to come up to the dais or you're on Zoom and wish to speak, we will acknowledge you and just state your name. So first off, we'd like to call Ms. Risa Berias to the podium, please.
Good evening. And I am so sorry for the loss that we're all experiencing. This board has been through so much in the last few years. This district has been through so much in the last few years, and the loss of trustee Eckes is going to leave a really big hole because she was our fiercest fighter for our kids and our teachers and our staff. I know that on a lot of issues, she and I didn't necessarily agree, but she always had an ear for parents and for teachers and staff. She was so caring. She led with her heart. Because at the end of the day, she was always fighting for what was best for our kids. And I'm so grateful that she shared her life with us, that she gave so much of herself to this district and to our kids. Thank you so much for sharing her with us. This is a massive commitment, and it's a commitment for you too. So thank you. I'm so thankful for Holly. And just want to express my most sincere condolences. It feels like shallow words. And she's family. Thank you.
Madam President, we then now would like to call Ms. Brenda Congo to the podium.
I'm Brenda Congo, Principal of Talion High Desert Academy. We would like to express our most sincere condolences on the passing of Adelanto Elementary School District Board of Trustee Member Holly Ekis. Trustee Ekis was a dedicated and passionate leader who worked tirelessly to improve the educational opportunities for students in the Adelanto Elementary School District. She was a strong advocate for the students of Talion and AESD and was always willing to lend her expertise to ensure that they had the best possible education. Trustee Ekis was a mentor and role model for many in the AESD community. She was always willing to lend a helping hand and provide advice and support to those who needed it. She was a true champion of education. And was passionate about creating a better future for the students of AESD. The staff at Talion High Desert Academy will forever be grateful for the dedication and commitment of trustee Ekis to the students of Adelanto Elementary School District. Her legacy will live on in the hearts of minds of those she touched and the students whose lives she helped to improve. We will remember trustee Ekis for her unwavering dedication to education, her tireless efforts to improve the educational opportunities for students, and her passion for creating a better future for the students of AESD. Our thoughts and prayers are with her family, AESD staff, and those who were touched by her life. May her legacy continue to inspire us all to strive for excellence in education.
Next, Madam President, we'd like to call Ms. Christina Root to the podium.
Good evening. I'm gonna apologize first because I feel like I'm going to stumble over my words, but I know Holly would be okay with that. I felt like I wanted to be here tonight to say thank you to Holly, the mom. Holly and I started Desert Trails together when her oldest Brad and my youngest Katie were in kindergarten in nineteen ninety-six. And Eric was just a teeny tiny thing. And we worked together and we played together. We did book fairs, we did dances, we did read-a-thons, we did everything together. Her passion for her child led to her passion for all our children. You boys need to know that everything your mom did in these last twenty-six years because of her love for you, what she wanted for you, what she wanted your education to be like, what she wanted your life to look like. And as you grew and you got older, she channeled that into every other child in her community. And for that, we are so thankful. There has never been a time in twenty-six years when Holly and I saw each other, that we didn't catch each other's eye, walk across the room, and the first thing out of one or the other of our mouths was, how are the kids? As much as she loved this dais, as much as she loved this district, as hard as she worked for everyone, every single conversation started in twenty-six and a half years with how are the kids? So even though I haven't seen you in a million years and you've grown, I know so much about you. And she knows so much about Richie and Megan and Katie because every conversation started that way. So I have to say thank you to your mom, my friend. And thank you to you for giving her to us for all these years. Thank you for being such an inspiration to her that she did all these good work, good works. We appreciate her. We love her. We will miss her. We thank you guys for what you gave up for her to be here doing this for us. And I hope in some small way you feel the love we all have for her. Trustees, I know it's so difficult, but I just want to thank you for your service. Because I know she would want you to too, and I know so many years together, I just, I think she'd want you all to know how much she appreciated you too. But I appreciate Holly the mama. So I just wanted to say that tonight. Thank you.
Madam President, we'd like to next welcome Ms. Melissa Ochoa and Mr. Sinatra. Ms. Ochoa is online. If you can ask her to unmute, please, sir.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you for letting us know all that. I have the privilege of knowing her when, when we were able to back in, I don't know, February or something, when the whole mandates were on. She was passionate about mandates. And as a parent, it was good that to us for her to stand up with us. And she was very passionate. A scripture that comes to mind about her is Second Timothy four, seven, and eight. It says, I have fought the good fight. And she was a fighter. I have finished the race. I have had faith. Now there is righteousness which still right all the world on that to me. And with she prays for our support for parents, friends also. Because we all have, we have different mindsets.
Okay, she's back online. Yeah, unmute her again.
Hello?
You're back.
I don't know. They said that I was muted. Well, I'm not sure where I stopped talking. But we're thankful for all her support for the kids and us parents and for standing with us even when everybody else turned their back. And our parents go out to her loved ones. And knowing that she did fight the good fight and that she finished her race and that this is not a goodbye, but it's a see you later. And she will be missed, but her memory will be in our minds and, and hearts. So thank you for all you for Holly of that you showed for our children and schools. Love you and, and appreciate you. Thank you.
That's all of the speaker comment cards. Madam President, at this time, we would like to open the floor up to any audience members here in person or on Zoom. And if it pleases Madam President and the board, I'd like to start.
Thank you.
First off, I want to thank the Ekis family for being here this evening. This is not easy for them. It's not easy for any of us. I want to thank them for all of the years that they allowed Holly to be with us. The friendship I had with her was beyond reproach. As somebody stated earlier, she knew the history of this district. One day I told her that she should write a book about it and it was somewhere in the works, about everything that she knew, because I didn't need to ask anybody else. If I had a question about what happened in this district, I would go to her. She knew it. She wouldn't even blink. I believe she's been with us at least over twenty-seven years. It's just amazing, such a legacy that she, she has with us and will continue to have that legacy as we move forward. It's not easy. It's not easy. You know, I, I had the opportunity to go visit her and prayed with her, sang to her, although I don't know if the family, you know, they were probably like, uh, doesn't sound too good, Mr. Kraus. She was a woman of faith. And she liked to hear hymns. I sang some of our favorite hymns to her. And she, uh, I know she appreciated it. You know, because blessed are the pure in heart, for they shall see God, and I know she's up there now. She had a pure heart, heart of gold. Heart of gold for the staff, students, the community of Adelanto that will never be forgotten. And again, it was just a, such a great opportunity to share all of the great times with her that I was able to and all the conversations that she had with me. One day we talked about her truck, how she needed brakes. I'm not an auto mechanic, but she said, do you know any good brake places in the high desert? So I, I recommended one to her, but she didn't like it because they charged too much. So she said, I'm not taking your recommendation again on brakes. I said, well, I don't know how much brakes go for anymore, so. But I apologized to her, you know. She finally found a place to do her brakes on her truck. She loved that truck. After every board meeting, I'd walk her out and she'd have the green truck. It was a green pickup truck. And she'd love that truck and she, uh, she'd park it out back and same spot every time. And I always knew when she was here because that spot be taken, you know, and I still can hear her voice. Many of you on the dais talked about how she would call everybody hun. She called me hun too. Everybody was hun, but you know, I kind of got embarrassed because she called me hun, but it's just a term of endearment that she used with many, many people. And, um, I, um, I'll never forget the Chrysler that the district has, a little green Chrysler. She used to drive that around when we went to conferences and last year she went to a conference, she put a CD in a CD player. It got stuck. And I don't know why, and she doesn't know why. But I will tell you that we really tried to get that CD out of there for her. She'd ask me periodically, hun, you got my CD yet? And I said, well, we're still working on it. She says, okay. But she never got mad at me. She wanted her CD back. She never got mad at me. Finally, we got the CD out. Got it back to her and she was so appreciative, but she had such patience, such understanding with many things. We had a lot of great times that will never be forgotten. And my condolences to the family. Again, she was very much loved and will continue to be loved. And her legacy again will live on in this community and far beyond this community. She was involved in many, many things that, so many things, when we started looking at all the things she was involved in, we ran out of paper. We were writing them down. And that's how much she was involved in many different activities and community events and volunteering and whatever she could find. One of the things many people may not know, she loved cats. She even asked me, you want some cats? And I said, well, I'm not good with animals. I said, I would if I could, but she'd always find some cats and try to rehome them. And she, she asked everybody and their uncle if they wanted one. And, you know, she was very passionate about her cats as well, many things, but just some of the things I remember. Anyway, I just appreciate the opportunity and I want to thank the board up here, our current board, and any past board members that had the opportunity to serve with trustee Ekis over the many years she was with us. Appreciate all of you and the work that you've done with her and the work for this district. And it will continue on as we move forward. Thank you.
Okay, Zee. Thank you. I want to say thank you to the family because the life of a board member is busy. Between phone calls, emails, board meetings, travel, there's so much that's involved that pulls them away from family. And, and Holly's passion was all of it. She devoted just as much to this district as she did for her family. And, you know, we would do travel together. She'd come, she'd go, okay hun, I'm coming over. I knew that was going to be a four hour because we got to plan it out. And she'd be like, I gotta make sure my kids, my, my kids can take me or my husband. And, and I'd be, okay, let's go ahead and let's plan it out. And then she would say, okay, let's do it hun, and we'll do it. And, you know, when, when, when Mr. Ekis, when you were down, you know, she'd be like, okay hun, I gotta get home. I gotta take care of my boys. And I said, which boys? She goes, they're all my boys. I gotta take care of them. She included you all the time with that. And, you know, she was just always with a smile. She could be hurting, but she would have a smile on her face and she would be very appreciative. And yeah, those cats, I can't tell you how many times she tried to get me a cat and I'd be like, Holly, I can't, I can't take a cat. Or she'd go to the thrift store and I have so many items that she's purchased. She goes, hun, I got you something. I know you're gonna love it. And I have these beautiful shoes and bags and she, all these things. And then sometimes I'd be like, Holly, no girl, I'm not gonna wear that. She'd be like, you can try it. If you don't like it, I'm just gonna bring it over. But that was who she was. She was a giver all the time for anything. It was just, I got you something. And, and then there was this big kid inside of her and the Barbies. You know, and she brought that first Barbie to me. I said, come on Holly, you have a Barbie? And she's like, no, you don't understand. These are different. And so she brought me the first one. And yeah, she's right. These are collectors and they're gorgeous Barbies. And, and I would looked at her like, okay Holly, well, anyway, long story short, I have a collection now. And we used to fight over them and she'd call me, hun, there's one on eBay. Can you buy it for me? I'll give you cash. I'm like, no, I want her. No, I've looked at her first. And we would go through back and forth, but we have these dolls that we collected that, you know, we would talk about and she'd say, she'd make jewelry for them and she'd bring them over. Here hun, I made some bracelets and some earrings for your doll. And, you know, and this was the kid of her. And it was another side that maybe some people didn't see, but it was the side that she shared with me. And, and I love her for that because it was a vulnerable side. And it was never, you know, it wasn't work. It was just Holly being Holly. And so an amazing woman, amazing mother. I, I just, her smile, her smile, I, I'm gonna miss that. But I just wanted to say thank you to the family because she did sacrifice. But her love spread across evenly with everybody and, and I'm gonna miss her so much.
Madam President, we do have Mr. Brian Hahn in Zoom. He'd like to say a few words at this time. Mr. Sinatra?
Asking him to unmute now. And if you'd like to show your video, I will display it at the boardroom. Mr. Hahn, you're unmuted.
I'm trying to start the video. Okay. Okay. Good evening.
Good evening. I am uh, I would have been in the boardroom this evening, but I wanted to share with you one of uh, one of Holly's pet projects for more than twenty years. And that was, I met Holly twenty-one years ago. And we used to have wonderful, wonderful conversation about many things. But one of, one of the things that I was passionate about was teaching our adult second language English learners, English. And so we're coming to you this evening from Morgan Kincaid, where I have a classroom filled with adults who are learning English. And we wanna thank Holly. Holly was instrumental in uh, in getting this program passed and moving on through many superintendents, assistant superintendents. And it's been just a a joy uh, to have all of these parents coming through and learning English over the years. And they are most grateful. Everyone, do you wanna wave for a minute? Just just wave. With regard to Holly, wow, like I said, I've known Holly for more than twenty years. Holly uh, Holly has always, much like everyone has said, had had the biggest heart, always was willing to help with anything. Uh, always there. Uh, we've been through many campaigns together when she was running for school board, uh, knocking on doors, handing out flyers and just uh, talking about her. We used to meet many different times. Uh, she would always come to school as uh, as most recently as this past summer. She made her rounds to uh, summer school sites and the year before that as well. Um, Holly is just uh, the finest example of what any board member could ever be. And you know, I uh, I would stand here crying, but uh, it's just been so hard for me to wrap my head around the fact that just this past Wednesday, when I was uh, when I was in the room with Holly and uh, Mr. Eckes and the boys, uh, we had a conversation like we're having right now. And she was lucid. She was, you know, had a had a will to fight. She did not want to give up. She felt that she still had a purpose here. And Holly, if you're listening, you do have a purpose. Your purpose and legacy will live on. And I want to leave you with that. Thank you so very much.
Do you have any members in the audience that may wish to come to the podium and say a few words at this time?
Um, Tammy Smith, teacher. I'm gonna try. Um, I just wanted, I guess, um, explain there's like very rare, that there's a person that you know you're gonna have a loving, warm, real smile every time you see them. But that was the case with Holly. It was always warm, always welcoming. When she visited the summer schools, I want you to know as teachers, we're like little kids rushing to go see Holly. And we're like always so happy, you know, and it was like we would mob around her because you know, she brought that. She made you feel good. She made you feel happy and she pushed you. I had her son in my class. And um, again, I have to, I'm gonna admit that I wasn't quite the teacher that I am now at that time. And she pushed me. I'm a better teacher today because of her. And I, you know, I can admit that. Um, but she brought that to you. And I remember, we have a retired teacher, a gentleman by the name of Ron Stein. And she and Mr. Stein really worked to bring the sports to schools because they understood that it's so important. The extracurriculars were a passion with her. And she really wanted that. And we have students that went on to play college and beyond because of the programs and things that she brought. So Holly will be remembered. And again, we will continue to pay tribute to her through the programs that we do. She was extremely important. And again, you know, like I said, um, she was very important. Again, she pushed me to be a better person, a better teacher, and I'll always be thankful for that. Um, scriptures, I think from Paul, right now is um, still yourself up in the armor of the Lord. Right now, I know that's about adversity, but also times when we're struggling and that's what keeps coming through my mind right now. So please, still yourself up in the armor of the Lord. Your mother loved you very much. Um, she will be most, thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience here uh, in person this evening? Mr. Sinatra, is there anyone on Zoom that if they raise their hand, if you're on Zoom and you'd like to raise your hand and say a few words, now is the time to you. Please do so.
I see nobody at the moment.
Uh, at this time, we have uh, yes, ma'am, please. Madam President, we'd like to see if cabinet members would like to say a few words at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus. Thank you to everybody. Uh, I think Dr. Dwyson and I are probably the newest ones here. So you know, I've only been here a few years, uh, almost two years in in May. And so hearing, hearing what everyone is sharing, um, you know, obviously I don't have those experiences, but um, it's nice to hear. Uh, you know, what I heard was woman of faith. I think I saw that when I went to go visit her. Um, I heard words like kind, warm, a smile. Um, and then uh, I know trustee LaFrenche and several others uh, mentioned about, hey hun. Um, you know, we heard that when we went to go visit her last Monday. And family. And I've heard that when she was here uh, serving. And so you know, I I do wanna thank the family as well uh, for allowing Dr. Dwyson, uh, Melanie Olsen-Savala and I to visit her last Monday. I wanna express my condolences to all of you. Uh, her uh, husband, uh, Donald Eckes and her sons Bradley and Eric. I've had the uh, pleasure to meet them at a conference. Uh, I think it was in Palm Desert and uh, we'd see you at breakfast time. So I I, that's how we met her boys, uh, which I agree, uh, two tall men. And you know, last week, obviously when we heard the news of trustee Eckles' health uh, situation, we were all devastated. Um, and and as I shared, Dr. Dwyson and Melanie and I drove down. And it was, it was nice to see several people coming to visit. I know when we were heading up through the elevator, uh, as we opened up on the second floor, uh, Dr. Amy Nguyen, former superintendent, was coming down, had the opportunity to meet her. And she was there visiting. Uh, during our visit, I was, it was, you know, she shared, like many of you shared tonight, how much she loved her family and her boys. Uh, and she wanted to be sure that her family was taken care of. Um, she was talkative. She engaged with us. Uh, and again, as I, as I shared, you know, many, many times we've heard uh, the phrase, hey hun. And she said it that night when we showed up, even with our masks on. And you know, as we were there, uh, she had another guest. She had the superintendent, former superintendent, uh, Edwin Gomez show up. So we stepped out. We had an opportunity, Melanie and I had an opportunity to talk with the uh, her husband and the boys. And so uh, again, uh, I would like to express to the family once again, um, how kind she was. I know several people mentioned that word tonight. I know during board meetings and in closed session meetings, uh, she would always greet each of us uh, in cabinet and and ask us how we were doing. And that was just her nature. Um, so on behalf of the human resources department staff, I'd like to extend our deepest condolences uh, to the Eckes family and entire Adelanto elementary school district family because I know many of you obviously know her much better than I. Um, and I know there's probably gonna be more comments maybe at the next board meeting as well. So again, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. Thank you.
Good evening. I'd like to first start with um, giving my condolences to the family. Um, she's truly going to be missed and she leaves a void for all of us. Um, I recall the first, actually, I think I first started here. And um, Ms. LeVey had mentioned earlier about her stopping in the office. And I think I first started and I popped into Ms. LeVey's office and um, she, she said, just immediately, hi hun, how you doing? And um, when I came in, she says to me, um, now I'm gonna be asking you a lot of questions. And I don't want you to take it personal, but that's just what I do. And I didn't know what to say or or what to do, but I said, you know what? I said, if I can't answer those questions, you have the right to ask me many, many more. And so I said, just, just give me a couple of weeks. I I think I had just started. And uh, she just laughed and I laughed, but I think immediately we had hit it off. And um, I remember uh, at the conference you mentioned last year, we were all having dinner um, together. And by chance, I had found out one of my cousins had worked there and there was all these fancy desserts. And we didn't, we're like, we don't like that, you know? And so we asked my cousin, I said, hey, do you have any ice cream in the back? And she's like, yeah, yeah, ice cream. And I think the boys are smiling because they remember. Um, so we all had that ice cream and it was good and but uh, guys, I just can't tell you enough how much she loved you and how much she talked about all of her boys. And we had that in common and we talked about my boys and we talked about her boys. And um, she was just a a very kind spirit, very welcoming. Um, she said we were family and I felt that um, immediately. And um, I always admired her for her passion and her dedication. And I think she leaves that. I don't like to say leaves behind because I know that her work will carry on in all of us who are here. And I'm just very grateful for um, the family for allowing me to come and see her. And also just to um, I'm just feel a better person for having known her. So um, I just wanna say thank you and again, my condolences.
I believe that's all the comments at this time, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. Right now, we're gonna take a moment of silence in honor of Ms. Holly. Okay, before I go on to adjournment, I just wanna say one last thing that when I first became a board member, this time at the meeting when it was time to close it out, Holly and I would look back and forth at each other like, uh, I don't know how long it's gonna go on, but uh, when it's time, we're gonna say it as fast as possible. And we would race to it, but before we would laugh because she would say, I gotta get on to my boys. And I said, I gotta get on to my kids too. I, they can't extend this meeting. I'm gonna say no. She's, I'm gonna say no too. So we used to love the adjournment part. So with that being said, I need a motion to adjourn.
Webster, I motion to adjourn.
I need a second, please. Ben, size sec- second. See call for the vote, please. Trustee Webster.
Hi.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee Benz.
Ben's eye.
Trustee LaFrenche.
LaFrenche, I. Motion pass. The time is, I don't know.
Six thirty-six, Madam President.
Six thirty-six. We adjourned.